Alrighty, I got the thumbs up that the cameras are working and we're live streaming as well. So, again, morning everybody that's here, anybody that's watching and anybody that's reviewing the tapes in the future. I would ask, if anybody does speak publicly today, we do ask for your name and address, but do recognize that the meetings are filmed and archived. So, we did have a gentleman at our last meeting that probably passed on some information that he wouldn't want on the internet forever, but it's there, so it's a public meeting. Before we call the roll, I'd like to invite our good pastor Bob Meyer up to provide the invocation and lead us in the pledge.
Heavenly Father, we worship you this morning, and we're so grateful that you are the Lord of the universe, and we accept your sovereignty over lives, our lives and the nation. And Father, we pray for your wisdom. What a time this is in our country where there's such division, where in a situation where the President of the United States refers to people like us as the most extremist group in recent history. And in the midst of all of that division and turmoil and the difficulties that we're going through economically, we ask you for your wisdom to govern well, to lead well, to know how to conduct ourselves, and we ask for your sovereign power to be at work in our nation, bringing about a restoration, a great spiritual revival and a political revival as well, to restore what you established when you established this nation. Lord, we present ourselves to you as your servants. It's not an easy time to be a servant of the people and your servant, but that's what we are, and we ask you to use us in the most powerful way possible. Give wisdom to all of these men and women who represent you, who represent right, who represent the law. Give wisdom to them to know how to apply the law, to have compassion for people, and yet to be warriors, warriors for you and warriors for what is right. And all of this were dependent upon you. For every elected official, for all those who serve in unelected capacity, I pray, Heavenly Father, give them strength from you and wisdom from you to serve well, to serve the people well and to serve you. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, the time is now 9:04. Amanda, could you call the roll, please? Here.
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 Alrighty, our first order of business is to approve the agenda. I'd accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. First item on business is to approve the items on consent.
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the items on consent. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Alrighty, elected officials, department head, staff reports. Any Dallas?
Good morning, Commissioners. Dallas Schroeder, Albert County Clerk and Recorder. I'd just like to give a brief report on the Elizabeth Park and Recreation District election that we just recently administered with them. Election day was May 3rd and went out pretty well. The major that was in question was defeated by a pretty large margin, 71.58% nos to 28.42% yeses. And of course, today is our last day to receive overseas military and signature cures, and we should tell about 100 or so ballots left to scan to finish that up, but those numbers won't change drastically. Overall, the special district had a 37% turnout, which is a huge, huge turnout for a special district election. So, that's good to see people getting involved. As I mentioned, today's last day to receive signature cures and overseas military ballots. Once we get those scanned, we are planning on canvassing on Monday, and then we will certify that election. I just wanted to also recognize the people that we had that helped us as far as election judges. This was a nonpartisan election, and so we could use staff, and all of our judges, didn't matter party affiliation as far as what they were doing. So, we had Danny and Beth Wilcox helped us, Diana Edstrom, Tracy DuCharme and Brad Ite from outside, and of course, our internal staff, Amanda Moore, Rachel Wilkins and Ron DeBraun and myself were able to help, which is, it's kind of refreshing for us to be able to get our hands dirty, so to speak, and be part of the process. And, you know, we learned some things during this election that are going to make things go smoother for the coming ones. So, we're excited about that, but I just wanted to recognize those folks and let you know everything went smoothly. This Saturday is the Yuakawa deadline for the June primary, so ballots are ready, ready to go, and we'll meet that deadline with no problem, but once again, we're back now in primary season. So, appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other elected officials? Sam?
Bobby. Good morning, Commissioners. Bobby Cheverie, Albert County Facilities. So, just want to give you guys an update. We've got on what we're doing. So, I put a few things in front of you. You can follow along if you'd like. We'll start with the Roden Bridge shop that we're building east of town here, just an update on it. So, we've had some pretty big things come through and get done that's helping us to move forward. So, we've got all the drawings from the pre-engineered metal building people. Our architects are working on the foundation design now. They're going back and forth a little bit. We've got some columns and stuff in the way, so we're going to have to change, either move those columns or change our design just a tick. It's nothing, it just happens all the time. So, that's where we're at. Then, they're getting ready to go out to bid for a lot of the dirt work and those sort of things, since we know what we're doing now. We are working with the town of Kiowa on an IGA still. I did get the numbers for our tap fees from the town of Kiowa. We're going to be roughly about $80,000 for water and sewer. We have a easement to get our sewer where we need it, so we did get that done. Now that I have those numbers, we can work on executing an IGA with them. And then, we are still on schedule to break ground mid to late July. Everything's still as it was. We haven't had to spend any more money since the last update, so that's still the same. So, that's kind of where we're at with that. The other things that we have going on right now, just from the facilities department, we've awarded a bid for, with time key glazing for the windows and doors in this building. We've got everything picked out. The drawings are done, so now we're just waiting on lead times. It's looking like they're thinking September or October, somewhere in there. They'll be able to do about eight windows a day, so as we get closer, we'll schedule that, and we'll have to have some people work from home for that day, but they will pull those windows out and go right back in the same day. And so, we'll have to do some scheduling with that, but we're moving forward. The Justice Center parking lot, we just had crack sealed, and we had our Roden Bridge Department go in and do some mastic work on some of those cracks that were too large. So, that is done. We're looking about the end of this month to seal coat it and restripe it. So, we're going to buy a few years before we have to really grind that up and redo it. We're working on, with the elevator company, to fix the lift over at the DMV, make that more of an elevator-style lift where it's a little easier for our public to operate it. I don't know if you guys have used it, but you kind of got to stand on one leg, wiggle your nose just right, and it's just not a good setup. So, we're working on that. I'm waiting on some electrical bids for redoing the campgrounds up at the fairgrounds. As soon as I get those, I think we're going to be ready to move ahead on that, and that will be updating all of the electrical, all of the water lines that we have so much trouble with all the time. And we'll be adding a few more spaces. We'll be going from about 32 RV spaces up to roughly 75 to 80. So, that's a big thing. It's been needed to be done for a long time up there. The warm-up arena, we had a Friends of Fair have donated a brand-new arena. The wind kind of did a number on that old wood fence, so we're finishing that up. They bought us all new panels to go all the way around it, and we drove, piped in the ground, and so it's going to be a really nice addition to our fairgrounds as soon as we get it done. So, if you see Friends of Fair people, just maybe we could thank them. Access control, we're working on that. We're reviewing the bids. We're going to score those, and hopefully by the end of the week, we'll be able to award. Mathston Park is about 73% complete. We've got all the playground equipment up. That part's finished. We're just waiting on the pavilion to go, to come in. And then, we did get a grant to do some stuff up at the fairgrounds, so we put a new sound system in, the warm-up arena and under the horse pavilion, which will really help with fair and the sale, and we won't be moving portable sound systems all over the place every day. And then, along with that, which I forgot to put on here, we did get another two sets of bleachers that'll hold 100 people each set, so that's going to be a big asset to us, too. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I just got a curiosity question. Everything you read tells you that materials supply and materials costs are not as predictable as you'd like them to be. How are you finding for the Roden Bridge shop?
So far, we, because of the approach we took with that building by doing the CMGC, we were able to lock that building price in. So, now, some of the interior stuff, we're yet to see where we're at with that, just because, you know, we were not going to purchase that kind of stuff because we have nowhere to store it. But, yeah, we did see a pretty good increase in prices, for sure. Availability, we're looking right now, most everything that we've done is pushed back a week or two, but nothing crazy. You know, we're not six months. The biggest thing up at the, for the Roden Bridge shop is Core Electric. They're five to six months out just from being able to get to us, to get us electric to that site. So, we've been working with them. They're kind of a pain to work with as far as actually getting ahold of somebody, but we finally got ahold of them. We got our application in, so we're moving forward, and at this point, as you like to say, we are where we are.
Thanks. Did Amanda get a copy of these for the...
She did.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, any other staff reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to citizen public comment. This is an opportunity for anybody to present to us on an issue that's not being covered in today's agenda. We ask that you limit comments to three minutes and provide your name and address when you come to the podium. Before we go to the room, Amanda, did we have anybody that wanted to be called or an email comment?
No.
Alrighty, thank you. All right, sir, please.
Morning. Dan Mason from Kiowa, Colorado. I've lived out here about 21 years. I'd like to make comment reference to the Albert County Health website regarding COVID-19. ECH advice for COVID treatment is the following. Isolate at home, wear a mask, get a PCR or rapid antigen test, follow Colorado state government guidelines, follow CDC guidelines, or listen to Dr. Fauci. ECH advice for COVID prevention is get the vaccine, wear a mask, avoid contact with other people. These recommendations are not effective in treating or preventing COVID infection and the spread of other potential viruses. Masks and the so-called vaccine have been proven to be detrimental to health. They don't prevent infection. Masks elevate CO2 levels in the blood, cause pulmonary distress, brain damage, psychological damage and learning disabilities, especially in children. The vaccine shots cause heart attacks, blood clots, Guillain-Barre's syndrome, epilepsy, AIDS, Crohn's disease, not to mention what havoc is wreaked by the genetic altering experimental vaccine on a person's DNA. No mention is made by Albert County Health on the website of treatments utilizing proven and safe effective medications like avermectin, hydroxychloroquine, et cetera. In fact, these alternatives seem to be purposely ignored. Other inexpensive and effective treatments like povidoone iodine and hydrogen peroxide nasal washes and gargles are also not mentioned. Links could and should be made by the ECH website for the safe and effective options that are alternatives to what's stated on the website. Yet, ECH strongly advises us to isolate at home when the proven unreliable PCR tests show false positive test results for COVID. Many high-profile medical authorities recommend safe and effective options for treating and preventing COVID infections, and their advice is free on various online websites such as Frontline COVID Critical Care, America's Frontline Doctors, et cetera. I can provide links to them for the county if desired. At the very least, ECH should offer these alternatives to the government recommendations on a separate page on the COVID-19 information pages of the ECH website. We need to let the people know about these alternatives if we're posting what's already posted on the website. Why hasn't this been done in over two years since the pandemic started? Will the counter response be the same next time, to just plan and comply with government demands?
Commissioners, that's three minutes.
Haven't we learned not to trust the state and federal health authorities? Additionally, the county coroner reports that six of nine cases she was involved in involve people who were vaccinated.
Okay, sir.
That's the end of my comments.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment at this time. Any comments or response? Okay, thank you. Okay, discussion items. The first item up we have is year-end supplemental appropriation to complete the records for 2021 spending.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tony McCormick, Finance Department, presenting for discussion the supplemental appropriation, the final supplemental appropriation for 2021. As we're, we've worked through the majority of the audit for 21. We're not quite complete yet, but we've worked through the prep and the audit work. So, we have some numbers to adjust for fund activity expenditures for the end of 21. High-level summary, we don't have any, I don't have a resolution to approve. That'll be for the next meeting, but high-level general funds, increase appropriations by about $216,000 as a result of additional cares and ARPA revenue expenditures related to those revenues. The law enforcement assistance fund up by about $250,000 for capital lease proceeds and insurance reimbursements. Grant funds, an increase of about $537,000, again, related to cares grants and ARPA revenues. And then, a small increase on the retirement fund of about $8,000, and then capital improvement fund, $74,000 as a result of redistributing ARP funds to different funds for expenditure. Those are the high levels. I don't know if you have any questions. We're presenting a more formal resolution and presentation at the next meeting.
Any questions, sir?
Just an observation. It appears like most of these increased expenditures were funded by state and federal funds.
Correct. So, the ARPA funds, of course, was unexpected, and we had some additional cares funds that we used to offset expenditures throughout the county.
No, appreciate it. So, they were, yeah, so, actually relatively small compared to the size of the general fund, and the rest makes complete sense. Appreciate it. I would ask if there's any public comment on this item, or... Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Alrighty, the next one was just an update on where we're at with the Spring Valley Ranch open space agreement.
Mark Greer, County Attorney. We've talked about this previously, and I'll provide an update of where we're at. I think we have language complete, at least from the county side. There was some communication with the other parties, including developers and organizations, that on their end, they need to review the language of the paperwork that we've drafted that would allow us to have a lot more use of this 151 acres for open space for Albert County residents. And so, we're really just waiting on the approval from their end of things. We are reaching out. We are asking, you know, when that review will be complete, and we hope that that will be soon. But as soon as we get the thumbs up, we'll be able to move forward and be able to execute this document on both sides. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to action items. The first is proclamation regarding National Economic Development Week. Mark.
Well, good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Chair, elected officials, staff, fellow citizens. I'm Mark Dednreader, Albert County Economic Development Manager. I've got my colleague Eric Larson here today as well, Economic Development Project Manager. We have a proclamation, yes, for you all to consider today. This is in celebration of Economic Development Week. As you recall from last year, Economic Development Week was started by the IEDC. That's the International Economic Development Council, and then the EDCC, the Economic Development Council of Colorado. They also support this celebration. Really, this week, it's just a great opportunity for us to share with folks, you know, what we do in economic development, you know, how we support businesses and communities, what we do, et cetera. And it's really been great. You know, just more and more existing and prospective businesses, they're finding us. They know we're here. It's great, getting more emails and phone calls and so forth. So, just over the last year, we've been able to increase that awareness. It's been positive. You know, I think the Economic Development website, that's helped certainly, and then, of course, you know, just getting out in the community and building the rapport and relationships has also helped us. For Economic Development Week, it was actually, it was fitting. On Monday, in fact, I met with a gentleman, and we were talking about a prospective business that he'd like to relocate and bring to Albert County. He contacted us. He wanted to share with us his plans, get a sense for, you know, what he'd need to do, what that process looks like, et cetera, you know, to get approval and get his doors open to his business. So, you know, as you know, part of our role is to be that liaison, right? And it's great, you know, to help businesses go through the development review process, and quite candidly, it's actually one of my favorite parts of the job. Really enjoy it. We also connect businesses to resources and our partners. We help customers navigate the economic zone opportunities here in the county. We like to provide data and demographic information as well. We also like to personalize the experience. You know, when someone wants to meet with us, we definitely do it, and I like to sit down face-to-face with folks, grab a cup of coffee at a local spot here and just visit, right? I mean, just get to know them, get a sense for, you know, what their plans are, their concerns, any questions they may have, that type of thing. But ultimately, in economic development, our job goes right back to those core functions of attracting, retaining business and just be a part of that whole job creation process. That's so important. And for Economic Development Week, we're pushing out little posts on our Albert County Economic Development LinkedIn page, and as you know, we've got a lot going on this year in the department, if you will. We've got a housing needs assessment and a economic development strategic plan for the county, and those two plans are imminent in a sense in terms of getting kicked off, and those will wrap up by the end of the year. And before I read the proclamation, Mr. Chair, any questions or comments?
One, I do, just wanted to say, I do appreciate kind of you jumping in. I guess it's been about a year and a half now.
Yes.
Eric coming in to really start something we never had before, which was to actually purposefully go out and seek businesses and grow jobs in the county. I mean, houses seem to appear by themselves, but, you know, providing those goods and services and jobs becomes very important if we want to be self-sufficient as a county, so do appreciate your toiling in the basement.
Thank you very much.
Any comment?
No, just thanks for the work you did.
Yeah. No, so with that, if you could read the proclamation, and we'll take a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, appreciate it. Recognizing May 9th through 13th, 2022, is National Economic Development Week in Albert County, Colorado. Whereas the International Economic Development Council, IEDC, the largest professional economic development organization, is dedicated in providing leadership and excellence in economic development for communities, members and partners. And whereas, in 2016, the IEDC created National Economic Development Week to increase awareness of local programs and services that create jobs, advance career development opportunities and increase quality of life among our communities. And whereas, the Economic Development Council of Colorado, the EDCC, works to strengthen our state's economy by unifying organizations involved in economic development, fostering the exchange of ideas, insights and best practices for economic developers. And whereas, the EDCC supports a week-long celebration of Colorado's economic development ecosystem and its partners. And whereas, economic developers promote economic well-being and quality of life for their communities by assisting in the creation, retention and expansion of jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth and provide a stable tax base. And whereas, economic developers stimulate and incubate entrepreneurism in order to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is the hallmark of the American economy. And whereas, the Albert County Economic Development Department is committed to help facilitate the creation of jobs, recruit, attract and retain businesses, serve as a guide to connect businesses to resources, advocate for business-friendly policies, encourage private sector investment, collaborate with local, regional and state strategic partners, assist in infrastructure improvements and support a thriving community. And now therefore, we, the Albert County Board of County Commissioners, do hereby recognize May 9th through the 13th, 2022, as National Economic Development Week in Albert County, Colorado, and remind individuals of the importance of pursuing economic prosperity. economic prosperity in our communities.
Thank you, Mark. I accept a motion to approve this proclamation.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the proclamation recognizing May ninth through the thirteenth of twenty twenty-two as National Economic Development Week in Elbert County, Colorado, as written.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mark.
Very much. And perhaps, Mr. Chair, commissioners, at the conclusion of this meeting, if we could maybe get a photo with the signed proclamation, that would be quite nice.
All righty. We will do that.
Appreciate that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All righty. Moving on, we have a series of public hearings regarding special event liquor licenses. The first is consideration of a special event liquor license for the Hyde and Plain Site Concert Fundraiser. Before we open the hearing, my understanding is?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, because of where I live and other considerations, I'm going to recuse myself from voting on this particular one because I don't want to let my bias show.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. All righty. So to proceed on, I'd ask?
I'll make a motion. We open the public hearing on special event liquor license for Hyde and Plain Site Concert Fundraiser.
All righty, I'll second that. Amanda, could you, we're in public hearing, if you could, just give us a little background on the item?
So I have received an application for special event permit. There are two representatives, Ron Olson from Five-O Ranch, and then a nonprofit, which is Hyde and Plain Site. I did receive their certificates of fact of good standing from, signed by the Secretary of State's office. So the event is going to take place, or will take place, on June fifth from three P. M. to eleven thirty P. M. There is an interesting thing about this. I could not put an address to the location, but it is a parcel of property located at Highway eighty-six on the corner of County Road ninety-three on the north side of eighty-six. They plan on having a concert fundraiser and after the, after the event pays for itself, then all of the rest of the proceeds will go towards the nonprofit Hyde and Plain Site, which is breaking the cycle of homelessness through poverty and poverty through education. And they help high school students who are experiencing homelessness. I did receive this morning a statement of authority that Ron Olson is the managing partner of this property. And our attorney has looked at that, so he can talk on that if he wants to. And then I don't believe, as of today, that a permit for the, I'm sorry, I don't know what it's called through the building department.
Special event or group?
Event permit, yeah, because mine is the special event.
Yeah, I think they're group event permits.
So the event permit is not completed as of yet, but Mr. Olson said he is working on it and he is here today so he can answer your questions. I did receive one written public comment that I provided to you.
Okay.
And if you want, I can go over.
We'll hold that till we open for public comment.
Okay, all right. And I think that's what I have, if you have any questions for me or the applicant.
Okay. Not for you? I'd just like to invite the applicant up if there's any additional information to provide. I am curious, just what's your anticipated number of attendees?
Originally, when I spoke with Teresa, we had, that's where part of the confusion of the other permit or the special event permit, whatever it is, because we anticipated less than two hundred and fifty people. And she had said we didn't need to get a permit, then guided me to go to Amanda to get the special event liquor license permit, which I did. Since then, I'm not sure the exact reason, but Teresa called me back and asked me to go ahead and pursue going through that, which we are in the process of doing.
Okay. All right, thanks. Amanda had mentioned there was no address, but it was a corner of parcel at ninety-three and eighty-six.
Yeah.
Is the access off ninety-three or is it off the highway?
It's actually, it's a little far. Well, it's off, if you go past County Road ninety-three, you will come to, there's a C dot approved entrance to the property, a little farther to the east, a little bit past mile marker thirty-seven is the best description I can give on the north side. And it's that parcel right there. It's about two hundred and fifty-four acres.
Is it fenced or contained?
Currently has cattle on it. That is it.
Okay. It's the, and this?
It is. It's a completely open, no buildings, no infrastructure on it, correct?
I'm assuming you manage the cattle?
I'm sorry.
Is it leased for cattle or those?
Neighbors' cattle are on it right now. It's just not fenced off from a separate property, so their cattle are on it.
Are they moving it, moving their cattle before the event or?
Yes. We will just have the cattle in a different field. Yes.
We're going to open up for public comment and then may have you back up again in a moment. All righty. At this point, I'd open for public comment on this license request. Amanda, you said there was one email comment and then we'll go to the room.
That's correct.
Yeah, just so, Amanda had provided the email comment and just for the record, it was from Debbie Cromer at two four three seven two, County Road one twenty-two in Reima. She writes, I'd like to convey my concerns about the June fifth concert located two miles directly south of my property. I'm concerned about wildfire danger from cars being driven over dry pastures and attendees smoking cigarettes. I'm concerned that attendees will not be limited to one to three alcoholic drinks, easy to smuggle in their own. I'm concerned about ingress and egress from and on Highway eighty-six. I'm concerned there'll be no trash pickup. Has somebody confirmed the legitimacy of the nonprofit? Do they have liability insurance in case something goes wrong? As Amanda did note, they did have certificates of good standing from the nonprofit. And several of these items are more related to the event, the general group event permit versus the specific liquor permit. We'll come back to that in a moment. Are there any comments in the room regarding this? Ma'am, if you could?
I didn't realize that you'd read my email.
Oh.
Thank you.
And you must be Debbie.
Saves me going over at you.
Okay.
But I just wanted to say that I'm here and I live right in the track for the south winds to blow whatever happens firewise right over my property. And very concerned about people turning in to this activity on a Sunday night. If anybody's driven on eighty-six between Kiowa and Lyman, it's a rodeo out there. Nobody would be expecting a whole line of cars waiting to make a left turn. And after the event, people, you have to go down through a ditch to get back up on the property and then go from there. So those are, those are my concerns, but thank you for voicing them.
You much appreciate, yeah. Do we have any other comment in the room? Yes, ma'am.
I'm the one that has the cows on the property.
Okay.
And we haven't really discussed us removing the cows at this point, but.
If we could just get your name and address for record.
I'm Kathy Haycock. It's two three four one two, County Road one twenty-two. Our property is the one that's at eighty-six and ninety-three. And his property begins a little further down. My concern with the liquor license is similar to what this woman just talked about also. If the concert's from three to eleven, that's quite a long time for people to be drinking. I think it's probably okay to say that there will be impaired people driving. And there is a hill that's just to the east of the entrance of this property that would, I don't know if we could call it a blind spot, but if people are coming over that hill at sixty-five miles an hour, people coming out of this event would not really have enough time to speed up to sixty-five before someone that came over that hill might not be able to see them. That concerns me a little bit. Of course, I'm also concerned about having impaired drivers on this property, that we do not have a fence between this property and our property. But it is two hundred acres, so I don't know if they get mixed up and go start going the wrong way, they're going to be driving into our property. Those are, those are my main concerns besides the obvious concern of fire danger. Could it be a non-smoking event? And obviously, the trash, the wind blows out there and, and those are, those are pretty much my main concerns.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comment? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Denise Conley and I'm also here on behalf of my husband, Norm Hobart. And we reside at two nine seven five five, County Road ninety-nine in Reima. And we've been residents in Elbert County for seven years now and our home also is about two miles north of this event. Some of our concerns regarding this liquor license and event are the amount of vehicles exiting and entering onto Highway eighty-six. Due to the sheer volume of vehicles, which may be completely stopped or turning at significantly decreased speeds as other vehicles are traveling at highway speeds, poses a significant hazard. For people who drink at this event and begin driving home, but then realize they're feeling the effects of intoxication and want to pull over, will find it difficult to do so as Highway eighty-six has very limited shoulder space or areas to pull over. Although we're a small community out in the country, we are not immune to the unique set of circumstances surrounding the consumption of alcohol. Where alcohol is involved, people will often bring their own alcohol, therefore avoiding regulation and the entire concept of this liquor license anyway. Additionally, we are concerned with the prospect of a fire occurring from within this event. With our extremely dry conditions, it wouldn't take much for idling vehicle exhaust or ashes from cigarettes to cause a grass fire. And if we have winds like we've been experiencing, that fire will take off in no time. We're asking for you to consider whether or not we have the appropriate amount of public safety resources available, such as EMS, fire, and law enforcement, if this concert encounters issues such as physical disturbances, car accidents, an accidental drug overdose, an unintended fentanyl poisoning, sexual assaults, suspected DUI drivers, or field fires, or even overly intoxicated individuals. And if so, can they respond in a timely manner to either mitigate or circumvent these offenses, knowing that these resources are stationed fourteen miles away? In conclusion, for the safety of the general public and to maintain the integrity of the properties in the area, we believe an event such as this is better suited in an area designed to accommodate the large amount of people it will attract. For example, a better location would be the Elbert County Fairgrounds, where public safety resources are in closer proximity and most likely more readily available to respond if needed. Moreover, a facility like this has sufficient overhead lighting, designated areas for parking, and easy access to roadways, ensuring a safer environment for both the general public and emergency personnel if needed to respond. And they are also more familiar with the layout of the fairgrounds rather than this property. We appreciate your time and consideration regarding our concerns around this event and we respectfully request that this liquor license is denied and that Hyde and Plain Site will consider a more appropriate location for their fundraiser. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have any other public comment? No. Sure, Tim.
Good morning, commissioners. Tim Norton, Elbert County Sheriff. I just, I'm not going to reiterate everything that the citizens have, but those are my concerns as well. We're in a stage-two fire ban. Vehicle traffic on the dry land out there, not only the vehicle traffic, but from what I read, there was going to be food trucks and cooking and so on and so forth. I do have concerns with the ingress, egress of traffic out on eighty-six. There is a blind spot there. The lady was correct on that issue. I went out and inspected in and out of that property. That will be an issue, especially with impaired people, intoxicated individuals. I would highly, I have not seen a permit yet, which has been discussed already, and I would, if this permit does get forward, would require for me to sign off on it, would require to have deputies there to enforce the help with the ingress, egress of traffic on eighty-six and to enforce DUIs leaving the property. I'd also like to remind the commissioners also, this is the final day of stampede rodeo as well and manpower for both events may be a little tough to accommodate both events at the same time. Thank you, sir.
Do we have any other comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment at this time. I'll invite the applicant up in a moment, but like I said, we're kind of splitting two processes here. The liquor license is very specific to the appropriateness and the controls of how liquor, beer, and wine may be sold and controlled on the premises. And we have a group event permit that addresses a lot of the concerns that we've brought up that do require sign off by, by the sheriff, by the fire department for fire and emergency services, public health to look at things like how are the, if there are food vendors, how are they going to be used, if there's going to be, depending on the number of people, how many porta-potties, those public safety aspects. And apparently, that process has been started, but obviously, there's some concerns raised there. But for the specifics of the liquor license, I know it's been brought up several times, how are you going to, how do you control people bringing liquor in from liquor or beer in from outside the venue? And then, again, I'm a little fuzzy on how many people, but anyway, sir, if you could at least address specifically the part of how you're going to control any alcoholic coming in from off-site? And then I guess it would probably be worthwhile at least to hear you address the other concerns that have been brought up in terms of trash, fire, access to eighty-six. And I understand you have been selling tickets?
I'm sorry.
I understand there are ticket sales that are already ongoing?
We have just started to announce that there have probably ten tickets, man.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, yeah, if you could at least, I guess, start by addressing the, how you're going to control outside liquor or alcohol from coming in?
At the, when people go through, what we will have as an entrance area that will be marked off, we're going to obviously ask people and we will visually check people. We're not going to physically check people. We will do our best in anything that we have advertised or we will put out, it says no food and alcohol or allowed, no outside food and alcohol. As you know, that can't stop every single person, but we're going to do our very. but we're going to do our very best to keep that from happening. We wanna follow the liquor rules of the special permit as closely as we can. We will have an enclosed area for where liquor is served from. People will have to buy or purchase a... we'll just give them a ticket that they can then go turn in. Those will be limited in how many they're able to get to three. And so, again, I can't stop somebody from buying three and then giving them to their buddy, but we will do our very best to control the number of drinks that are allowed for everyone. The real purpose of the alcohol sales is to help contribute to the money that we're trying to raise for the nonprofit. And monies will go towards the nonprofit from anything after expenses. So that's the purpose of it. In regards to specifically the liquor license, we do have people who have volunteered to help us because it's for a nonprofit that are from the liquor industry, so they're not gonna be teenagers or drinking alcohol or something like that. They're professional bartenders that are... that understand and have experience with recognizing when people are neighborated and won't allow them to get anything else if they feel like that's the case. In regards to concerns of people leaving, having drunk and too much, I can't say that we'll be able to a hundred percent to stop that from happening, but we intend to do our very best to make sure that we are paying attention. We are going to work with, I haven't worked with directly, with the Sheriff's Department on this because it's on Highway eighty-six. I've been working with State Patrol, and they have indicated to us that they would allow us to have a couple of their officers help us with ingress and egress, and they would also stay at the exits at the time of people leaving. So there would be some, if you wanna call it DUI monitoring. I guess that's the best way to say it. That's a possibility that... We don't have final approval from them on that yet, but we're working on it. And then, we would, of course, coordinate that with the Sheriff's Department if there's any concern, any further concerns. Does that answer your questions regarding that part of it? Or did you have any other thing else?
I guess that covers quite a bit on the liquor sales, but...
Yeah, I was trying to...
And again, I know it's the other group event permit doesn't come to us, but since they were raised, is there an intent to... I mean, not that there's a lot growing, but are you gonna mow the area where parking will happen?
First of all, it's overgrazed, so it's eaten down to dirt. I mean, not completely. There is some grass out in the area. I'm not saying that there isn't. We're choosing to do it in June, not in August, partly because we would hope that there will be some rain and so forth. One of the anticipated things that we plan to do is that we're gonna have a water truck out there and water the area that's intended to be for the week, two or three or four times, depending on how dry it is, if we get rain between now and then or not. Otherwise, there will be a water truck that will spray water all for the entire area to try to lessen any of that. We intend to have... Can't stop people completely from smoking, but we intend to make it a no-smoking event. And the parking area that will... or people where people will be parking, we will have watered and tried to alleviate that as much as possible. We also will have on-site six- and eight-hundred gallon water tanks on trailers with hoses ready to go if there is any type of, you know, somebody smoking and starts a small amount. Not to mention, there will be two hundred feet to stomp it out, so... Not saying that it couldn't happen, just saying we will do everything we can to alleviate those things.
How are you gonna stop people from leaving or wandering off the property and to the adjoining property?
We are gonna, as best we can. We will... We have volunteers who are gonna be in the outer parts of the area. So we don't anticipate that anything like that will happen, and we will, you know, wrangle them back towards the area that they're supposed to be in. It'll be... It's two hundred and fifty-four acres. There'll be a small... It probably will cover, I don't know, a two-to-three acre area of the property? Maybe a little bit bigger than that. I'm not good at estimating without getting out there and measuring something. And trashing those... We've got a huge number of volunteers, so fully gonna, you know, pick up trash, do all of those things afterwards, make sure that everything... We intend to leave the property looking as good or better than it does before we're on there. Been in the county since eighteen seventy. We're not trying to trash the land, for sure.
Yeah, and like Chris said, what we're hearing is the liquor permit. We're not really hearing the items that concern the event permit as far as sheriff and police and things like that. That'd be up to them to... If it moves forward, for them to sign off on all that stuff. So, like I said, at this hearing, we're not really... That's not really what we're here to hear.
Yeah, I'm kind of in the same boat. If we do proceed, I think the actual issuing of the license would be conditional on the other... All the other pieces being...
That would be acceptable.
...signed off by public health, emergency services, sheriff. We generally don't have C.DOT or the State Patrol as part of the process, but if you've been talking with them, I think providing that to the sheriff...
Only spoken with them because it's off of Highway eighty-six.
Yeah, which...
State Highway would probably involve them, and they immediately said, yes, they'd be interested in taking a look at it and helping us out with it, so...
Yeah, and to be completely honest, I'm not... You are being accurate by saying, yes, you can't control people, every person on the property from not passing on drinks or not letting people out.
And we will have a number of volunteers who are not allowed to drink at the event that will be able to help. We're just trying to raise as much money as we can for the nonprofit and try to make it an event that we could work with. We had briefly checked with a couple of other places, but the cost just makes it prohibitive in order for us to raise the kind of money that we'd like to for somebody said a more appropriate place. This is free, 'cause it's my property. But, you know, to go rent the county, you know the expenses of renting the county facilities, so...
Oh, I understand that. Man, the purpose for the group event permit was specifically to cover the items that have been brought up today. So when we have an established venue, Messer Arena, Wedding Venue, County Fairgrounds that are set up to ensure that events like this can be held safely, then renting the venue pretty much covers it, and we just look at the liquor license. So, again, you know, it sounds like there's still quite a bit of coordination to be done. So, this is before us now, but again, if approved, it's not gonna be issued until all the other pieces that are needed for the event come through. And I would urge you to get that together as quickly as possible. If you're selling tickets, you wanna make sure you actually have an approval to hold an event, so...
No, I don't have anything else.
So I guess with that, if I had not closed public comment, I don't recall... Well, I'll close public comment again if I hadn't earlier. Okay, thank you. So, I'd accept...
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
If you want to continue it, I would have to repost it.
Okay.
And that would mean we probably need to put together a special meeting. So I just wanted to throw that out.
We could continue pending a group event permit being approved. That'd be a cleaner way, even though it requires a... Would require a special meeting, but that may be the better way to go.
Yeah, I think that might be the better... That way, we know everything is complete and been signed off on everybody other than making it contingent upon approval. Any idea how long it might take you to get everything taken care of?
We think we have everything in place. It would just be, you know, if there's any issues that we don't take care of with the different department heads, that if they have something they request of us, I can't answer that, 'cause I don't know what that would be yet. But we think we have contingency plans for pretty much everything, and we think once they see those, they hopefully will be able to approve it. It should be turned into them probably within the next couple of days.
Okay.
Well, you guys are closed on Friday, so I don't know whether...
Well, this... I would recommend hand-carrying and face-to-face conversation.
Oh, I know. I just meant that... I just meant, I don't know what the...
And this is Kiowa Fire District that you're within?
I believe it is, yes.
Okay, so... Yeah, so why don't we just...
I would... If, from my standpoint, I would rather see if you could approve it contingent on the other stuff. If that's not the direction you wanna go, I can understand that, but that would be my preference, is...
Yeah. I think with everything as open as it is, why don't we continue to nine AM next Wednesday, if that works for you?
That'll work for me.
Okay. We'll continue this hearing until nine AM next Wednesday? Thanks. Appreciate the suggestion. Alrighty, I'd take a motion to close public hearing on this at this time.
I'll make a motion. We close public hearing on special event liquor license, Hide in Plain Sight Concert Fundraiser.
Alrighty, I'd... I would invite Commissioner Thayer back to the table. Next item we have is consideration of another special event liquor license for the Elizabeth Rodeo Association Community Rodeo. I'd accept a motion to open public hearing on this item.
I'll make a motion. We open public hearing on consideration of special event liquor license Elizabeth Rodeo Association for the Community Rodeo.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor of open hearing, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. We're in public hearing. Amanda.
Okay. This is an application for a special event liquor permit for the Community Rodeo that the Elizabeth Rodeo Association puts on. It's for May twenty-first, from eight AM to eleven-thirty PM. This is an annual event, and nothing has changed since the previous year. All required forms and fees have been turned in, and if you have any questions, I can answer.
Taking place at Casey Jones on Perks and Rec property?
Correct. With that being said, our event permit is not required.
Right, okay. Did we receive any public comment?
I did not.
You, no? Okay. Open public comment in this room, if anybody has any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, closed public comment. Any discussion at the table?
I have none. I'm willing to make a motion.
Okay.
I move that we approve the special event liquor license for Elizabeth Rodeo Association Community Rodeo.
I'll second.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second to approve the license requested. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. I'd accept a motion to close public hearing on this item.
I'll make a motion. We close public hearing on special event liquor license for the Elizabeth Rodeo Association Community Rodeo.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to close public hearing on the item. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. Moving on, we have another public hearing to consider a special event liquor license for the Elizabeth Rodeo Association for the Stampede itself. All, I'd accept a motion to open public hearing on this item.
I'll make a motion. We open public hearing on special event liquor license Elizabeth Rodeo Association Stampede.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to open public hearing on this item. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're in public hearing. Amanda?
Okay. This is the Elizabeth Rodeo Association Stampede's application for a special event permit. The dates are June second through June fifth. Again, this is an annual event, and no changes have been noted. And all the required forms and fees have been paid. Staff has no concerns.
Thank you very much. Any public comment received to you? Amanda?
No.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment in the room? Alrighty, seeing none. We'll close public comment on this item and accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the special event liquor license Elizabeth Rodeo Association Stampede.
I'll second.
A motion in a second to approve the license for the Elizabeth Rodeo Association Stampede. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. And then, we'll take a motion to close public hearing on this item.
I'll make a motion. We close public hearing on special event liquor license Elizabeth Rodeo Association Stampede.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to close public hearing on this item. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Alrighty, moving on. We have the minutes from our last regular B.O.C.C. meeting of April twenty-seventh. I'd accept a motion to approve the minutes as presented and dispense with reading.
I move that we approve the April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two minutes as written and dispense with the reading of those minutes.
I'll second.
A motion in a second to approve the minutes as presented and dispense with the reading. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, our last action item today is consideration of some language changes regarding the amendments, concept briefs for planned unit developments. Greg?
Thank you, Greg Thompson, Community and Development Services Director. The item before you, this particular item, is code changes to two different sections of the code. One is the zoning code Article three G in the subdivision regulations Article two F. Basically, the idea is to change the concept plan that's called four in our code into a concept brief. We have done a few concept briefs over the last several months. Basically, a concept brief applies to large applications, so it'd be a larger subdivision or a larger PUD that would come through and be a relatively impactful land use application. The idea is to give the applicant a heads-up on big issues, big items that might be needed or discussed through that land use application process. The thinking was that that concept plan portion of our code really didn't get us very much in terms of the information we got from the applicant, give or take a bubble plan, but not really something that was overly helpful through the process, but that that concept brief, because there was that more open dialogue, was something that was helpful. So this would come in prior to PUD or any PUD amendment submittals. And again, it's designed to provide potential applicants direction on those major concerns that would come in. No vote would be taken. It would be the board that would be hearing the request and the conversation, but no vote in giving that direction. That's pretty much all I have on that. Happy to answer any questions you might have. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
I don't have any questions, any comments?
I've I've got a comment, one of them is on your red line one here, where it talks about water, it's Z, water use and or reuse, demonstrating the basis under which potential applicant complies with the three-hundred-year water requirements. The information we've been getting back from the state and that type of thing has been a wee bit confusing in in that regard. What I'd like to do is further identify the the three-hundred-year water by, the three-hundred-year water requirements as identified by each, identified by the state water board of each individual aquifer. Because what, we've been getting these notes back that says we can take the first hundred years out of one, which actually depletes it in its entirety, then you can go to the next aquifers down. What the intent of this is, in my mind, is it's three-hundred years for each and every identified aquifer. I'm not sure I said that very well, but.
Understood, and I think that makes sense.
I think if we just, you know, kind of added, oh, each servicing aquifer or words to that effect.
Yeah, we can make that adjustment.
Yeah, I just think in overall, this is good because it clarifies what we're really have been trying to do and I have been doing in practice, which is essentially, early on and pre-submital, we get what is essentially a community meeting for the Commissioners, so we have an opportunity to to hear in broad terms what what's being planned, express our concerns early on, and do so in a public manner, so we're not just getting individual visits from from developers, but we're putting everything out on the table as it should be from the very start, so I appreciate that. Do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I would accept a motion to approve these recommended changes with the correction or addition that Grant had mentioned.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the amendments as amended.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt the amendments as amended. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All righty. Moving on to agenda items for next meeting, I guess our next meeting will be a special meeting at zero-nine, just to hopefully finish up consideration of the Hyde in Plain Sight liquor permit, but our regular scheduled meeting on the twenty-fifth, I believe. If I got the date right, but, well, I'm assuming we'll have the appropriation to be completed Perhaps the open space agreement, final? All right, do we have anything else specific you'd like to? All right, well, we'll start with those. All righty, I guess that gets us going. That's all the business we have before us this morning. We do have two land use hearings starting here at one PM today, so for now, the time is ten fifteen, we'll be in recess until one PM. Thank you.